Okay, call the meeting of ISD 361 School Board to order, roll call, Tony Corpi. One sec, Tony, sorry. All right, Tony Corpi.
Here.
Emily McGonigal.
Here.
Bruce Rablorn. Ted Saxton here, Roxanne Schockstedt-Dietz. Joanne Smith.
Here.
Jennifer Windows. Kevin Grover.
Here.
Ella Bar Jeffrey, Student Representative.
Here.
All right, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. I got a motion by Rocks and a second by Jen, further discussion? Anything, Kevin?
No, we're good.
Okay, here, no further discussion, we'll do a roll call vote, Tony Corpi.
Yes.
Emily McGonigal.
Yes.
Bruce Rablorn.
Yes.
Ted Saxton. Oh, that's me, sorry, oh my goodness, well, yes. Roxanne Schockstedt-Dietz.
Yes.
Joanne Smith.
Yes.
Jennifer Windows. Carries unanimously, moving on to public open forum, do we have anybody here for public open forum right now? Okay, then we will be moving on to the. Oh, absolutely, Jen. Do you have a microphone over there?
I just want to share a thank you note we all received from the FHS Student Council. It says, Dear FHS School Board, thank you for your continued dedication and effort during this challenging school year. We appreciate all your efforts to make the school a functioning, thriving place to learn. The entire student body thanks you. You really cooperated with the student coun- your your cooperation with the Student Council is much appreciated as well, and we look forward to working with you next year. Thanks again, the FHS Student Council.
Oh, that's nice, thank you, thanks for reading that, Jen. Moving on to our tenure recognition. I'll entertain a motion to award tenure. Sorry, I don't mean to ruin this here, but.
Do you want me?
Yeah, okay, so we're gonna, the reason why I'm having a problem here is it's listed four times on the thing, but what I need is a member to introduce it, and then we are going to do all four of them, or read the same thing for all four, so I will entertain a motion for the next four tenure recognition.
So moved.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I can second.
Jen.
All right, sorry, Jen, all right, I heard her, I knew it was her. Member Jen Windows introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Resolution for awarding contract leading to continuing contract rights or tenure. Whereas Julie Talmadge, Brandon Vang, Anne Sullivan, and Angie Schwartz have served the required number of years of probationary teaching as prescribed by MS 1228.40 and whereas Julie Talmadge, Brandon Vang, Anne Sullivan, and Angie Schwartz have successfully met the instructional and professional standards of ISD 361 International Falls Public Schools as determined by their immediate supervisor Melissa Tate or Tim Eversen. And whereas Melissa Tate Principal, Tim Eversen Principal, and Kevin Grover Superintendent now recommend Julie Talmadge, Brandon Vang, Anne Sullivan, and Angie Schwartz to the School Board to faculty tenure. Be it resolved that Julie Talmadge, Brandon Vang, Anne Sullivan, and Angie Schwartz, upon recommendation of the administration be granted faculty tenure to the extent of 1.0 FTE with all its privileges and responsibilities effective the 2021 to 2022 school year. The motion for adoption of foregoing resolution was duly seconded by members, Rox, or sorry, Tony, did I hear your name? Emily, okay.
Rocks did, but yeah.
Um, okay, we'll leave it with Tony here then. By, the motion for adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by member Tony Copley, the following voted in favor, we'll do a roll call vote. Tony Corpi.
Yes.
Emily McGonigal.
Yes.
Bruce Rablorn.
Yes.
Ted Saxton, yes, Roxanne Schockstedt-Dietz.
Yes.
Joanne Smith.
Yes.
Jennifer Windows.
Yes.
It carries unanimously. Whereupon said resolution was declared duly passed and adopted, congratulations. How do you want to do this?
I would ask that each one comes up and receives their plaque, and if we can, whoever's here, we'll get a picture when they're done.
Sounds good. Let's start off with Anne Sullivan.
I don't think Annie's here. Sorry, I didn't see Annie. It's it's up to you, it's it's 100% if you're comfortable.
Okay. Weird, it's a weird day.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Angela Smart. Congratulations. Why, congratulations. Brandon Vang. Congratulations. And you, it's Ellen.
Congratulations to all four of you, just so you're aware, I am going to send, we didn't expect the box to up here, and so I made certificates as well, when they send them to the room, they're obviously hanging them this way, whatever, so thank you, you're more than welcome to all state, you don't want to stay 100%.
We usually, but they don't recommend.
Yeah, I was thinking about that on the way here, I was.
So.
Okay, good.
I don't want.
Yeah. Sneak out with them and pretend to be a teacher. Okay. Approve the consent agenda as presented, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Bruce and a second by Emily. Further discussion?
If I can just comment on a couple of things, first of all, there's there's two cafeteria people, just so you're aware of, we hired additional staff, I'm going to call them due to COVID this year, so that is why they are being in essence placed on ULA under request to leave of absence. They're number four and five, just just so you're aware, I believe one of them may end up with a position through union process, but just throwing that out there, obviously, coaches are being hired, just like we're planning for a normal, normal year, and we all hope that's what it'll be. There's some, you're just receiving all the budgets, which will be adopted in June, if there's any questions, we'll talk about some of the stuff at the board retreat, some of the stuff, but again, we need to have a budget in place prior to July 1, so those are coming for approval in in June, and I think that is all I have for comments.
Thank you.
Unless there's questions.
Any clarifying questions? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Tony Corpi.
Yes.
Emily McGonigal.
Yes.
Bruce Rablorn.
Yes.
Ted Saxton, yes, Roxanne Schockstedt-Dietz.
Yes.
Joanne Smith.
Yes.
Jennifer Windows.
Yeah.
It carries unanimously. Moving on to action item number one, resolution of acceptance of gifts and donations, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I got a motion by Rocks. And a second by Jen.
Did I, I copied it, did I, or no, sorry.
Resolution for acceptance of gifts and donations, whereas School Board Policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district. Whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 states, the School Board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of International Falls Public Schools, ISD 361, accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. District donations received, from Lukachek Architecture Inc., two hours of design service, $200. Falls Track Boosters, Track Poles, $301. Box Tops for Education, Falls High School, $13.30. Sheila Field Scoreboard Sponsorship, Coca-Cola of International Falls, $500. 2021 Prom Donations, Border Bank Employee Casual Friday, $100. Falls Fire Department Relief Association, $50. Whirly Motors, $25. We had a motion by, gosh, I don't even, I didn't.
Rocks and a second by Jen.
Our motion by Rocks and a second by Jen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Tony Corpi.
Yes.
Emily McGonigal.
Yes.
Bruce Rablorn.
Yes.
Ted Saxton, yes, Roxanne Schockstedt-Dietz.
Yes.
Joanne Smith.
Yes.
Jennifer Windows.
Yeah.
It carries unanimously, thank you very much for the donations. Action item number two, approve increasing Genesee Castretto Elementary Teacher from .57 FTE to 1.0 FTE for the 2021-2022 school year at VA2. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I got a motion by Rocks and a second by Tony. All right, um, is there any further discussion on this?
Just so the boards are aware, what's happened, and it's it's just a timing issue, we got our final total, or our final preliminary numbers out of title, sorry, and and so that's what allows allowed us to fill her position back to 1.0, it's additional title money to make it whole, and there's roughly about 20,000 left over that, you know, we'll go into that program, whether it's for supplies, you you know, whatever, but that's why, you know, if we would have known a month ago, we would have never placed her on ULA, and and she's aware, and we we said it was possible, and if the preliminary numbers came in, and they did, so that's why we're increasing her, so, just so the boards are. Cool, correct, we can't fund her, yeah, yeah, yep, correct.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Tony Corpi.
Yes.
Emily McGonigal.
Yes.
Bruce Rablorn.
Yes.
Ted Saxton, yes, Roxanne Schockstedt-Dietz.
Yes.
Joanne Smith.
Yes.
Jennifer Windows.
Yeah.
Carries unanimously. Moving on to action item number three, resolution designation of identified official with authority for education identity access management, entertain a motion. I got a motion by Jen and a second by Bruce, and I have to read something here. Member Jen Windows introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Board Resolution for Appointing an Identified Official with Authority Iowa for the External User Access Recertification System. Whereas the Minnesota Department of Education requires that the school district annually designate an an identified officials, or with authority to comply with MNIT Enterprise Identity and Access Management Standard, which states that all user access rights to Minnesota State systems must be reviewed and certified at least annually. The Identified Official with Authority Iowa will assign job duties and authorize external users' access to MDE secure systems for their local education agency, LEA. Be it resolved, the School Board recommends to authorize Kevin Grover Superintendent to act as the Identified Official with Authority IOWA for International Falls Public School District 361-01. The motion for this adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by member Bruce Rablorn. And upon vote being taken thereon, the following voted in favor, roll call, Emily, or Tony Corpi.
Yes.
Emily McGonigal.
Yes.
Bruce Rablorn.
Yes.
Ted Saxton, yes, Roxanne Schockstedt-Dietz.
Yes.
Joanne Smith.
Yes.
Jennifer Windows.
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously, whereupon said resolution was duly passed. Moving on to action item number four, approve hire of Steve Windows as Assistant Girls Basketball Coach for the 2021-2022 season at step year three. Board Member Jennifer Windows will abstain from voting, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I got a motion by Rocks and a second by Joanne. And then I believe the only reason that this wasn't an action, I mean, a consent agenda item was because of Jen.
Correct, both of these, this one and the following one because of
Oh, yeah.
possible conflict of interest, so.
Okay, we will do, is there any further discussion? Do a roll call vote, Tony Corpi.
Yes.
Emily McGonigal.
Yes.
Bruce Rablorn.
Yes.
Ted Saxton, yes, Roxanne Schockstedt-Dietz.
Yes.
Joanne Smith.
Yes.
Yes.
Jennifer Windows. Carries with six, four, and one abstention. Moving on to action item number five, approve approve hire of Dan McGonigal as one act play advisor for the 2021-2022 school year. Board Member Emily McGonigal to abstain from voting, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Jen and a second by Joanne. Any further discussion?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Hearing no further discussion, we'll do a roll call vote, Tony Corpi.
Yes.
Emily McGonigal. Oh, sorry, you still have to say abstain, though. Bruce Rablorn.
Yes.
Ted Saxton, yes, Roxanne Schockstedt-Dietz.
Yes.
Joanne Smith.
Yes.
Jennifer Windows.
Yes.
It carries six in favor and one abstention. Moving on to action item number six, a graduate amend graduation policy for 2020-2021 school year to allow students who were on track to graduate on time in June 2021 to be able to participate in the graduation ceremonies regardless of credit total, I'll entertain a motion. Got a motion by Bruce, do I have a second? And a second by Rocks. Further discussion?
Just so the boards are aware, normally, our graduation policy says if a student is more than a half credit out, they cannot participate in the graduation ceremony. Mr. Eversen and I were chatting, and it came from him to push, that this being the different year, we don't know, I mean, we're pushing kids, we have, was it roughly seven, you you know, that we're, and I'm not saying that's an outstanding number, you you know, but with all things said, we just feel it's best, not only A with me being out of town, but we've had conversations, you know, the night before, the day before, whatever, and just to avoid a little bit of that, just for this year, as long as they were on track, let's let them walk, you you know, is is our recommendation.
And they do in the summer school?
Well, I mean, some may have a, you know, that's been a, you know, have a plan in place, and maybe they all seven will make it, and it's not an issue, just trying to, you you know, avoid, okay, a kid's one credit. Normally, they'd be kind of out of luck, you you know, type deal, and again, it's something we can look at if you want to change it forever, but it's been our stance, you got to have something, but with the year we're in, we're hopeful they'll all make it, you know, but if not, you know, if they don't, they don't get their diploma, don't get me wrong, but at least they get to go through and hopefully we'll finish, so that's our recommendation. Any questions?
Sounds good, thank you. We have a motion by Bruce and a second by Rocks, is there any further discussion? Do a roll call vote, Tony Corpi.
Yes.
Emily McGonigal.
Yes.
Bruce Rablorn.
Yes.
Ted Saxton, yes, Roxanne Schockstedt-Dietz.
Yes.
Joanne Smith.
Yes.
Jennifer Windows.
Yes.
Carries unanimously. And that is it for the action item portion of our show, moving on to the committee and administrative reports, Ella Bar Jeffrey, Student Council.
Hello, so we finished our leadership week about two weeks ago, just to teach our kids more of what it means to be a leader within Student Council, and then what being a leader looks like, and just things revolving around the topic. Now, for upcoming things, we are planning Spring Sports Week for next week, so the 24th through the 28th. We are planning a highway and a cemetery cleanup, which is a new thing for us, but one of our members suggested it, so we're going to do our best to make that happen before the end of the year. We are also in the process of doing elections, and we'll hope we have the results out by the end of May, which I'm excited to see who we'll have for next year. We will also be doing our end of the year Student Council Party at the end of May, which I'm excited for, we'll still be following COVID guidelines best we can, but it will be the only time we have gotten to meet in person this year, so that will be nice. And I think that's about all I have for you.
Thank you, Ella.
Yeah.
Melissa Tate, Elementary Principal.
And I'm filling in, Ms. Tate is on, I don't know if the board is aware, the fifth grade is down at, it's called Star Starbase, down in Duluth, it's a, wow, I I'm just excited, this can be, I I was down there when we were looking into this a year, year and a half ago, it's all hands-on, four days, so to speak, for the kids, of course, the the challenge for us is we're a fair distance away, there are many of the schools down there have been doing it, you know, a week is what they say for several years, but they can go from Proctor, Hermantown, Duluth, so some of them are northern, even Virginia, I don't know if they made it happen this year or not, but they were working on it. And so anyway, Missy is down there with, I think roughly 50 students or so, there's parent chaperones, all kind, you know, everything's taken care of, but that said, it's their first night, so I said, don't worry about it, I will report, so, anyway, just a few things from her. Their carnival is scheduled for the last week, just so the boards are aware, they're doing it different, not everyone gets to go all on the same day, they're doing it over three days. So a grade, and I don't have them listed out, but for instance, second grade might go the morning of the first day. They're the only group to go, they have some time so they can do some cleaning and stuff, then another group will go in the afternoon, and so they've spread it out over three days so that the kids at least somewhat get their normal thing, you know, carnival end of the year activity, all kids are going, it wasn't, you know, in the past, it was, they had to have so many tickets, you know, PBS tickets and stuff, but that's all on the side, so that is going to go, the track meet, again, you know, modified, a little different arrangement, it did go, as far as Missy says, went well last Friday, it was just fourth and fifth grade, not saying it's an end of the, or or permanent change, but they reduced the numbers, and of course, fifth grade, it's kind of their last year to do it, so they chose fourth and fifth, and those groups got to participate. Kindergarten and preschool, they're going to do a drive-through graduation again this year, and that is on June 2. Enrollment, they're up, and again, this is head count, up two kids from last month. And most likely, that's where they will finish, and that's what Missy had sent me, so I can answer questions if you have, but I don't know if I'll have the answers.
Any questions on that report? Moving on to Tim Eversen, Secondary Principal.
Our enrollment is at 5:36, we're down one from last month. We are now finished with all MCA testing at the high school, I know there were a couple of kids today that were just making up a day that they had missed in the last couple of weeks. Seniors' last day of school will be on Friday, May 28, and we will be collecting books and technology on the last student in-person days for the different grades, so we do have a schedule in place, and we'll be communicating that with students, I've already communicated that with staff. So that means like the Monday, Tuesday students will turn in their materials on Tuesday, and the Thursday, Friday kids will turn it in on Friday. And then distance learners will be turning things in on on Wednesdays, and again, I've got a schedule, and we'll be getting that out to students. The last, like I mentioned, the last day for school for seniors is May 28, but on Friday, June 4, there will be a senior breakfast at the Elks for at 8:30, followed by graduation practice in the arena at 9:30, and our graduation ceremony this year is in Bronco Arena on Sunday, June 6 at 3:00 p.m. We now have 23 students signed up for summer school in grade six through 12, and we're anticipating more numbers in the coming weeks. We plan to offer summer school Monday through Thursday, 8:30 to 11:30 a.m. from Monday, June 7 through Thursday, June 24, and we're going to take a couple-week break, and we'll come back on July 12, and we'll run July 12 through Thursday, July 29 for a total of six weeks, that's all we have.
Thank you, Tim, any questions?
Kevin, you're going to be gone, did you find a speaker?
Tim, Tim's taking care of. Well. Yeah.
Any other questions for Tim? Kevin Grover Superintendent.
Okay, a couple just reminders to start with, para negotiations, 10 o'clock on the 26. I don't foresee it going complete two hours, but just throwing that out for the group that is taking care of that. We'll exchange proposals, have some discussion, and go from there. Following that, starting in June, July, and so on, just the boards are aware, we'll end each meeting kind of with a closed session, where the group, myself, and whoever will update the rest of the board on, you know, whether it's them, teachers, administration, whatever, so just, just throwing that out there. Board Retreat on Friday, 8 to 4 in the arena. I'm getting packets out, those that are in attendance tonight, got a complete printed packet, I sent it email to everyone, if, and I'm just throwing it out. Emily, if you don't mind, I'll send one home for you, and Tony, if you want to buzz me, it it's just, I feel it's easier to look at documents, especially jot some notes. But if you want it, Tony, just buzz me when you're coming by sometime, and I'll get it out to you, otherwise, I'll have them there, but the other piece that I need, I'm just going to say guidance, does anyone have a preference as far as lunch that day, and I, we're we're going to order lunch in, so I need, I mean, where where do you want us to get something? You you want me to bring, you know, and I'm just throwing it out, I can bring, I'm looking for something like a Sammy's or something, get a menu and bring it, and we can order it in the morning, would that be the?
That'd be fine.
I mean, I'm just looking at something, I don't know what everyone's thing is, is Sammy's fine, or is there somewhere else people would prefer? Okay, I'll get a menu, we might even have one downstairs, part of the morning detail, we'll get an order put together and and take care of. Couple things, then, just to update you on, as far as QCOM goes, I'm, I guess, happy. Couple things then, just to update you on. As far as QCOM goes, I'm, I guess, happy to present to the board. It's not an official update. We have a end-of-the-year report that'll come to the board in June. But just so the board is aware, our district goals are based on STAR data. And I'm just going to give you some rough numbers here, or I should say they're official numbers, but quickly run through them. I didn't print this out and didn't attach, but can get you copies. The district goal for reading was 65.5% of the students meeting their benchmark. 65.94, very close, and I think considering the year that we're in, it says something. As far as math goes, the goal was 71.5%, 75.22, so roughly 4%. And again, keep in mind, we're new into STAR, so we're still feeling out exactly. The elementary, that was district elementary. Their goal for reading was 70.5, and now again, they've done this several years, so those numbers were a little more, you know, solid, if you will. 77.96 of the students passed, met their benchmark goal. So in a year like this, and again, the teachers didn't think they did. You know, and that's the interesting piece, you know, that they were not necessarily happy, you know, so that's amazing. In math, or that was reading, sorry, I just said, in math, 76.5% was the goal. 78.88% is what they attained. And keep in mind, there's 3% is what the, from the year prior, is what it was bumped up. Keep in mind, the year prior, we didn't have numbers, so it was actually two years ago. But the elementary's done STAR reading and math for quite a few years. The high school now, not the same. You know, again, last year, testing was shut down, so if you recall, results were nullified. So really, this is the first year for the high school to see how this works. In reading, the goal was 60.5%. Again, 3% up from kind of what the data looked like it should have, you know, been. 57.47, so they did increase a little bit, but they didn't technically meet the goal. And then at the high school, and I'll come back to that, in math, 66.5% was the goal, 72.39 was the achievement. So all but the high school reading, but keep in mind, the high school's been on hybrid all year. And so being in school two days a week, again, doesn't mean that we don't have requirements and expect kids to be doing, but it's not the same. So just so the boards are aware, the state again gave discretion to either use your testing, or we could allot the money and pay it out in a different way based on attaining the other pieces. And so the QOC made the decision that even though the testing's great, we felt everyone deserved the compensation this year, so we restructured. The state gave that option to put the money on other areas. But I think it's worth throwing out to you that, as far as I'm concerned, everyone made it. I mean, to hold your own in a year like this, I think says something. So I'm just making the board aware of it, and obviously, the state's aware of it because they've allowed the flexibility. Go ahead, Rox.
How do you, what are you guys doing with the measurement of the, I don't know what the, is it still called VCD program?
Well, I mean, they.
Do you, do you just blend them into the reading and math, or how do you do with some of the kids for testing?
They, this is based on the STAR, and I don't know if Tim can help me. I don't know if they do any type of STAR testing or not.
Are they using anything?
Yeah, I don't know.
So how does that count into this?
Yeah.
When you're looking at the scores, the scores were reported for programs like Heidi's, are they reported for this?
I don't think, they were not part of the QCOM.
Well, yeah, I thought she used the STAR program, but it's not.
Renaissance.
I don't know that you guys are getting picked up on the microphone.
Sorry.
Okay, well, I guess my question is, so everybody, all the teachers get the QCOM?
That do.
Including programs, teachers.
Correct.
And, but then they don't use numbers? They don't use scores for Heidi?
Yeah, but Heidi has students who do take the STAR. She doesn't have this.
Right, I know that, but the other ones.
Correct. Well, but the same thing goes, take like a senior teacher, you know, the STAR testing goes through 10th grade. You know, the 11th and 12th grade teachers, they're still included. They have PGP's, they have, you know, team meetings. They may teach a lower class or may not, but you know what I'm saying? So the specialized population or specialized teachers, they have some kids that take the regular STAR test. They're going to have some that don't, so.
I was just wondering about the ones that don't.
They're still included.
Are they, are they allowed to use the pre-assessment?
They can.
Whereby, whereby they, with that, they can check progress or regression. Can you check the progress rate? It is confusing. I'm sure it's called STAR, it's for career assessment. It's different than the Renaissance STAR. It couldn't mesh the two because we were going by growth, and the numbers that we used in Renaissance STAR, it couldn't mesh up with that.
And it has to, from the state, it has to be a normed, like an NWA, a STAR, MCAs. And so the problem is, you know, it's no different than I'm just going to use a senior calc class. You know, the teacher could write a pre-test and post-test, but we can't set a goal on that. And so that's the piece where unless you, like I say, can find a way to do STAR or NWA with older kids, they're just not counted, or certain, you know, groups are not, but they're still included. They can still individually monitor, are the kids making growth, you know?
I guess what I'm saying is, if you're making a formal report on this, it'd be nice to have some kind of a formal report on the specialized kids that are not in that program. And because this all blends into as we go to our retreat for our strategic plan, you know, again, I'm trying to always show respect to that special needs population, and I just think we need to include them in things like this as well as our strategic plan.
So is the, is the MPASS, which is the alternative to the MCA, right?
Correct.
Is that thing in consideration?
We used to use that when we did our, used MCAs, you know, as a QCOM, you know, measurement. But the problem, and again, not saying MPASS, you know, it's an assessment, but the problem was with the MCAs is we're not looking at, you know, in essence, an individual student's growth. Where we're trying to do that here, you know, from year to year, where it was comparing to last year's sixth grade or last year's seventh grade. And so when we went away from MCA, the MPASS went away, you know, they still take it, and we're going to see our data here, but it's not for the QCOM goal, you know? And the same thing with, I'm going to say with anyone's IEP, you know, there's several measures, you know, or different ways to measure growth, and it's something worth talking about on Friday of, you know, trying to show, you know. So anyway, that's, that's the QCOM piece, and again, we'll have a formal report to you when the group does that in June. Graduation, and this is a piece, not asking, we're just asking for some direction. Obviously, everyone is aware that things have changed a little bit. But the piece that hasn't changed is this is the board's ceremony, okay? So we have the right to run it, in essence, how we want to. We can completely open everything up, you know, whatever the governor and Department of Health, you know, allow. Or we can take a more, I'm going to say, modified approach. You know, for instance, do we want to still, I'm going to say ticket, give every student six tickets or something? Roughly, we have 79 kids, 80 kids, so that'd be 480 tickets roughly, okay? And, you know, it is going to be live streamed, or do we want to open it up wide to anyone in the public? You know, assuming we can, my only fear, and I'm just being honest, I may be comfortable, but I'm just going to use Ted as an example. Maybe Ted isn't, you know, and so how do we accommodate? And of course, we're not going to please everyone, but the piece I throw out, and we've been advised to have conversation, is this is the board's, as much as you don't like to think, it's a kid's ceremony, but it's the board's ceremony. So we can, I mean, you know, if we're over a certain number, there may still be masking requirements, you know? If we're under a certain number, it may be, you know, just like here, personal choice, you know, type deal. Right now, I believe if it was over 500 people in the arena, then it requires masking, you know? And so I guess I'm just asking for input, you know? And again, we're not going to please everyone, but I'm just a little, I don't know how many families would have more than six. You know, you may have two sets of grandparents.
What's the capacity?
Well, the capacity is much over 500. I mean, each side, we can have 75, 75 or 77, I didn't bring the drawing, six-foot space on each side, okay? So I mean, there's plenty of room to do five, six, you know, pods and still keep spacing, you know, using both sides. You know, it's just a matter of, are we opening up to anyone and everyone that wants to come? You see what I'm getting at? Like normally, like a graduation would be, we are sticking with the arena because we can space much better, even if we do wide-open it, compared to the gym, which is normally, I'm going to say shoulder to shoulder. But I guess we need a little bit of direction. We will space the kids out accordingly, you know? Plenty of space down on the floor, same with the board. And my, again, my gut is, we will probably go, you know, have the board stand. Normally, we'd have you all rotate hand, you know, a diploma, shake hands. We'll probably have them come through one at a time, and everyone else just, you know, stand back and, in essence, honor. And again, not shake hands, most likely, you know, if you're on, you know, that type deal. I'm just, you don't know, or if they're willing, they can shake a hand. If not, they walk by. Of course, it's up to the board, you know, do you want, you know, elbow bumps as they walk by? Rather, just, you know, stand six feet back?
For that, I would say whatever we do, we should probably have that figured out beforehand to avoid a bunch of awkward moments up there, you know?
And that's why we're having some conversation here. This isn't something, like I say, we put to a vote, you know, three, three to four or whatever. We just need a little direction.
So my, I, I start, I would start with, obviously, the CDC as a standard, you know, but you're not going to do worse than what the CDC's recommending for capacity and, you know, all their guidelines and stuff like that. But the, it's usually a pretty well-attended event around town. And so my concern would be that the, is it going to be then first come, first served? Place fills up to where we're no longer comfortable, and maybe family members that would have been in somebody's, you know, immediate six or whatever, don't have a spot to sit, or it's, you know?
There'll be spots, but what I'm afraid of, and I'm just going to use again Ted as an example, if Ted is a little more on the cautious side, and he would have went, but now he won't go watch a kid or grandkid because we have, because we're going to be able, after the 28th, it's going to open up because our last teacher day is the third or whatever, or that Friday is the teacher day. And come Sunday, the rules are off, so to speak, you know? And so other than, like you say, if it's over 500, we're going to have to mask unless something changes between now and then, but we can sit shoulder to shoulder in there, you know, according to guidelines. I guess my concern is, and again, some are fine with that, I'm leaning the other way where, I'll just be honest, I don't want a parent or grandparent not to go because, you know, they don't feel comfortable. You know, and I mean, another thought is to allow, you know, one side of the bleachers must be six-foot space. Will accommodate families, and then say, you know, the other side, you know, sit where you want, you know, I don't know, you know? But then it's, like, say. Oh, correct. And then everyone's going to have to wear, correct, correct.
Kevin, can I ask a couple of questions? So right now, everybody gets how many people per?
We haven't said a number. We had said, you know, prior to this, you know, governor announcement as of recent, we were thinking six a kid, and that does allow plenty of accommodations if you're a separated family. You know, we did that last year, allowed a second vehicle in the parking lot for, you know, split families if they requested. And so, I mean, you could have, I don't know, I'm just guessing, 87, 88 families, so to speak. I don't know how many split families we have.
But with about 79 graduates and the board members and six people, you're already at about 475 people. So you're already at your, pretty much at that max.
But we can go over 500. I mean, what, after, when you have your graduation, you could have 800 in there, 900. The only requirement is then you got to mask, you know, unless they change that. But like, my concern is, like I say, if there are people that then don't go to this once-in-a-lifetime event, of course, there might be some that if a family had 20 people they want to, you know, bring, they can't go to this once-in-a-lifetime event, but I guess six or even eight, if you want to go, it's much different than open it wide up, you know what I'm saying, to anyone in the community.
I think there's, you know, even prior to COVID, there's been schools that for the actual ceremony, they choose to limit the number of people that can attend because of, you know, space issues or any of issues. So I don't think that that's, you know, a terrible thing to think about. When you're throwing out six, Kevin, is that six with the ability to do spacing then? Is that kind of the thought?
We'd have no problem spacing, and again, we're not going to be out there with a tape measure, but like I say, the arena right now itself, you could put 74, I'm going to say, single people on one side spaced out up and down six feet. So that's actually, you know, just say 150 using both sides, 144, 146.
People are grouped.
Correct, but so if you start doing a group of six, again, but keep in mind, in bleachers, six people take up, you know, three, three in one row, three in the next. Don't take a large group. So I mean, say we were 50 on a side. I mean, there's still way more than we need. But Emily, you are correct. I mean, the graduation I'm going to, they get, they get six tickets. And that's how it always is because the gym just can't hold anymore, and they do one ceremony. They don't split into. And so it's not abnormal, you know, to possibly not, everyone not be able to go, so I guess.
Well, I would like to get the easy answer out of the way. I would like to see not handshake, and I'd like to see, you know, elbows or something. I think that's an easy one. I don't think anybody should have a problem with elbow instead of handshake.
Yeah, I was thinking of there's something better than that, but nothing came to me.
Yeah, but I hate to see a handshake.
So my gut is, and we don't have a, I don't have a picture here. I'm going to say board chair, or if he wants to designate, one person will take and grab all of the, you know, in hand, the actual diploma. The rest of the board will line up then down a ways spaced, and as people come by, if, you know, if they want, or, you know, maybe I'm just going to say Bruce coached, you know, a kid or something, you know? Congrats, you know, you can say congrats. They walked by. If, like, say, more close with certain ones, 100% up to the board.
So how about tickets?
Yeah, I, so I think, it's hard to, I'm kind of torn on this one, to be perfectly honest, because it's hard to go against if the CDC says we can do it, you know? Because that's kind of what I've been saying, and we've been doing as a school this whole time, is CDC guidelines. But at the same time, limiting it to six people per family just seems like such a good idea. So I don't, you know, it's like, I'm kind of, it's tough, so.
I agree with you. I think, I think six is a nice number for each family. And again, if you really had to make an adjustment for somebody whose family was split or something, you know, there will be people who have less than that too. But, so I mean, I think within reason, but, you know, we're still at, the state is at 66 or 60-plus percent vaccinated, and our county is at 44. Several people will be from out of town. I mean, I, there's, there is some caution with the opening up because we really aren't sure yet how much it's going to, you know, increase the spread. And I think it's still streamed to everybody. We've been doing that all year. We've been able to try to make grandparents see basketball games and other things that are out of town. So I think six sounds very reasonable. You're still going to have a nice crowd there for everybody. And that'd be my suggestion, is to stick with the six with some flexibility. Just because I think it's safer for our community personally.
Yeah, no, the, you mean us as board. There's, it's going to be live televised. It's going to, it's going to be broadcast.
I just was questioning, is there like a photographer that will take a picture?
We're doing just like, we're doing just like we did last year. We have hired a photographer, which is not a typical thing to take a picture of each kid. And it's going to be done. It's not going to go on forever, but parents aren't going to be able to be as close, you know, type deal. And so that's all arranged. They've, they chose, I should say, the kids chose an option to put in names. And so I believe, am I correct, Tim? Is it Jackie again? Yeah, it is. She'll, she'll take, you know, during the ceremony, and I guess we haven't talked about if. She'll, she'll take, you know, during the ceremony, and I guess we haven't talked about if, um. Yeah, I think she's gonna do just like they were, you know, last year, um, if they wanna come to a family ahead of time, or, you know, with the kid. More upfront, so they, they could have different people, if you remember, yeah.
If I could comment, um, Mr. Grover, you said earlier, um, you mentioned an idea of having the arena split. So, um, if I understood correctly, one side would follow, um, six foot distancing masks. And then the other side could kind of be free to do as they please, is that correct?
That is an option that I threw out there that, um, you, you know, the tough part is we, i- if you took, and I'm just using you as an example. Brought a family of six and sat on that side, I'm guessing we could, and, and I'm just guessing accommodate about fifty groups. Um, like I say, it's mid seventies if it's just a single person, you know, six feet apart, but, um, so. That is one option thrown out there.
I think that would be, um, me personally, that would be my preference because I know my family is very much, um. Six feet, wear masks, but I know especially with COVID guidelines, um, lifting, not a lot of people are still. Following those, so it'd be nice for like people to have the options, um, cause then you could fit your comfortability. Um, especially like if it was just mixed, then, um, I know my family wouldn't be comfortable sitting next to a family that's. Not distancing, wearing a mask, um, so I think that just kind of would be a good option for that leeway for different families. Um, but then I also think it would be good to stick to that six person limit, which, those are just my thoughts on it.
Can you use? Can you use, because they won't hear you, so, so that was an option thrown out, that what, what I'm hearing from. A couple that have thrown out is just going six per kid, it's not open to the public, and, you know, we would.
But what I'm saying is, everybody wears masks in the building or only one side wears masks?
No, it, it depends on what number we get over, i- if we open it up to the public. And assuming each kid has roughly six, we're gonna have to require masks. Even if you're vaccinated, it's our deal because we're gonna be over five hundred unless they change that. If we limit it to six, you know, per kid, um, and some families won't have six. We can then, it's, it's your option, it's not a requirement because we're gonna be under that five hundred. If you're comfortable not masking, and again, no matter what, we're gonna recommend. You know, spacing, just like the kids are gonna be spaced out, the problem is if we don't limit the number, it's gonna be harder to, you, you know. Um, and again, people are gonna have to do, I'm just gonna say, do what they think is right too, that, I'm just gonna say. I'm gonna guess people are gonna be closer than six as you get towards the, you know, where the stage is or whatever. You may have to sit, you know, down the bleachers, a little ways, you'll still be able to see, you know, because just the way it's gonna be. You know what I'm saying, that the closer you wanna be, so.
So then, um, you're also gonna have people camping out there the night before then that you might wanna think about too, if, if we're gonna limit it. And the seating's gonna be, I don't know, it's just something to think about.
And what age, what, is there like an age limit for the ticket? So let's say I have a five-year-old. Does she take up one ticket or is she free?
I would think she'd.
Because she can sit on somebody's lap, I, I'm just asking the question.
I think they all have to count.
Yeah, that's what I would think.
I would worry that would put staff in a bad place if we would start putting, you know, then it's like, who's gonna be the teller of the no?
Yeah, that's, uh, the, uh, the problem I see with having it, uh, split on each side is the logistical. Part of it too, when we already have the logistics of graduation, you know, but the six, I, I don't hear anybody really. Going against that unless somebody wants to advocate for more than six.
I guess going off of what Ella was saying, like, either way, if, if it's six and then people don't have to mask. You're still putting certain people that aren't ready to unmask in a situation, so what if we just opened it up to over five hundred? Everybody wore a mask, and then if there's people that aren't feeling comfortable, could we open up like the top where the glass is and they could stand back there? Like up in the concession area?
But that becomes tough, I mean, there again, you know how it is, you could really get one person a window just about. If all you're gonna do is six foot space, y- y- you know, and if your back's six feet, you aren't gonna see. You know, a whole lot, because we're gonna be right down below that, you know, where the stage is gonna be set up.
Everybody had a mask on, then maybe there would only be a few amount that would be upstairs that just didn't feel comfortable. I don't know, just a thought.
Another thought is, and I'm just throwing this out there, but if you say, okay, you tape off individual areas for each student. Throughout the whole arena and whatever's in that, and you give each student, say, okay, this spot is so-and-so's. Spot, and that's how many, you know, whatever X amount of people fit in that spot, that's your spot, you have to fit into this taped area.
But that, that's gonna be tough, that, you know.
How do you sit people based on GPA?
It'd be a random draw, but what I'm getting as, are the families gonna come test the spot out to know that they can get ten in there or?
But I mean, you would, at least when you kind of line it out, you would be able to say, okay, we think about six people. So then that's how many tickets we only give out, you know, so you can do the spacing kind of beforehand. So you would know how many people you can kind of space out, so you would still give out only a certain amount of tickets per family. But at least you would have a good idea and then everybody would be completely spaced out. And each student would know exactly where they're going so that it doesn't create the, I need to stand in line five hours before. I don't know, I'm just throwing out ideas.
I have a quick question if that's okay, um, for tickets, are we gonna have to have, um. Sign our family members up like we did for prom, um, like we had to say, we had to tell Mrs. Koenig like. This is who, um, my guests are gonna be just so they could plan better for that, and then. Other comment really quick about just the spatial issues. Um, I know for prom, they tried to mark out areas like sit six feet away and people did not follow that. So that would just be like one thing to think about.
I, I guess unless hearing, um, large resistance, I would say we go with the six. We, we will print tickets, that's how we're doing it, we're not, um, taking where you have to give us the six ahead of time. We'll give each student, that'll be part of the grad practice or, or stuff, they'll have a printed ticket, they get six. Tim can talk in one of his senior meetings that if someone has extenuating circumstances or a split family and they need. You, you know, additional, it can be a private conversation, and, um, it won't be open to the public and. Um, like you say, to me, that is the, um. Probably the. You know, again.
It'll still be pretty full in there.
Well, it'll be the most people we've had in a venue. In a year and a half. We can. Yeah, it's your, I mean, it's our. And it's gonna be for forty-five minutes, an hour, so to speak, I mean, I like that.
I, I, I'm just still the same, I, again, it seems like it's the best idea, it's just, uh, it's so tough for me to, when the CDC says something to do it. But I'm okay with being extra cautious.
But again, individual businesses right now, there's some that used to wear masks.
And we're in charge of this individual business, so.
So, that is all I have unless someone has.
Repeat what Bruce just said, because I couldn't hear what he was saying.
Sorry, oh, sorry, what, what he said is go, go with the six per family and require masks for the ceremony. Doesn't matter what the number is, um, it's, you know, it's what we've been doing for a year or whatever. And so, um, you know, barring a medical, you, you know, if someone comes, I'm not gonna challenge them, I, I won't be there. But for the most part, we will all be masked and it's our ceremony.
Yes, thank you.
I don't have anything else unless you have questions.
I'd just like to give a, a quick shout out to Ella for being our student representative, I think she did an amazing job, I'd like to say thank you.
Me too, I second that, thank you Ella for all you've contributed this year and last year.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, well, do we have anything else for the rest of the board or for the?
Can I?
Yeah.
Can I just say one thing about the retreat on Friday, um, we had talked. Um, Kevin and Emily and I had spoken, just to try to reiterate that if everybody could look through their packet beforehand so that. And the agenda so that you can kind of come in, not needing to catch up so much, it's just to kind of be ready to dive into that discussion. Would be really helpful, because sometimes it just, you know, it's gonna be, we're gonna be running it, um, it's gonna be a little bit new for us to. Run a, the strategic planning, um, retreat for, it'll be new, but if we can kind of come in, I think we can be more efficient of all the things that we wanna cover. And, um, and, uh, right now, we're not inviting as much, uh, public comment. But I, over time, as we do more strategic planning, which is an ongoing process, I know we're really wanting more public input like we did years ago. When we did this, so that is, I believe, gonna come one day, but right now, we just wanna get that ball rolling and I'm excited that we'll be doing it.
And keep in mind, there's, I mean, there's like eight pages of entry and withdrawal information in there, doesn't have anyone's name on it. But don't feel like you gotta memorize, but it's just showing you what you'll see a lot of kids come, go, a lot, a lot of, you, you know. There's, um, same thing with PSEO numbers, there's two, no, four pages of, you, you know, so don't, it, it's a thick packet. But don't feel graphs, um, MCA and, and, and different graphs, there's gotta be twenty pages, you, you know. Um, of data, so, so don't, I mean, just glance that, look at it, read through the mission vision, you know, those type deals. The budget stuff, again, a lot of it's stuff you've seen, we're gonna go back through and try explaining, there is some new stuff in there, so. I, I, um, agree with Jen, if you can look through, um, but don't, don't stress and spend. Forty hours between now and then.
Awesome, well, thank you guys for doing that, I appreciate it very much. Um, I was gonna cut the meeting short without going to the committee reports for Community Education Advisory Board and REC, so Community Ed. I saw Dan here earlier, if you wanted to.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, so, under the committee reports in terms of the committee piece. I, I attended a series of meetings with a lot of other, um, of my peers and counterparts in other districts and. Um, just kind of led to a larger conversation regarding our advisory council, uh, we have kind of some participation issues and. Um, some of those pieces, so, uh, a few of us on the council and Kevin. Uh, are, are kinda in the beginning stages of having some conversations, um, to just try to see if we can. Uh, nail this down a little bit better, um, I don't know whether it's me, if it's a me issue, if it's, if it is a me issue, bring that out. Um, if not, um, you know, we're just, a lot of different things that are being done that we really aren't doing here in terms of. Um, with our advisory council, so just. Uh, hopefully some of those conversations can continue in, in terms of this, the larger vision and, and. And mission as well, kind of following along with what you guys on the board level are doing. I, working backwards in, through my report quick, uh, so grants, um. Joanne, Beth Ann, Slotinsky and I have been working on a grant for the past two months. Um, and it's, uh, over a one million dollar in total grant. And I just wanted to publicly acknowledge how much I've appreciated, uh, the collaboration with the team. Um, each of us brought a, a different, um, sets of talents and skills and, and at varying times over the last two months, those. The, you know, each of us took a sort of a leadership position within the group to make sure we push the mission forward. Um, that collaboration was, I think, really key to this grant, um, getting submitted, we, we submitted it this morning, we worked on Saturday. We worked quite a few hours, uh, throughout our regular professional day and, and a lot of stuff kind of got put on the back table for our. All three of us and, and, um, even Joanne, working outside of our district, um, put stuff on the back table. So, uh, just wanted to reiterate that we appreciate, that I appreciated the whole process and. Um, we worked in Beth Ann's room quite a bit and, and the safe space that that money created from the previous grant. You know, I saw firsthand how many of the students really felt like that was a safe place that they could come and go and. And, and just be welcomed and supported and supportive of one another, so it was, it was a good deal. Um, we've submitted it this morning and we expect to learn on the funding piece on August twenty-seventh. I apologize, my dog's chewing on a bowl here in the back, um, I, I should say Emily's dog. Um, so, so real quick on programming, summer programming, we're, all we're gonna focus on is the youth for this summer. A lot of the adult stuff's just gonna be put aside, just based on CDC guidance and waiting for those kind of pieces to come into place. So, a lot of the adult programming will be more looking at it at the fall. And then I wanted to just talk quick about adults with disabilities, um, we continue to seek an adults with disabilities coordinator. We've had note takers, um, but the people who work with this population in our community are looking, looking towards us to bring. Uh, the programming that we have back as soon as we can. If you know anybody who might be interested or qualified, if you guys could please send them our way, we're, we're, I'd really like to get that thing rolling again. And, and make sure that we capitalize on some of the benefits that are available to us as it, as a result of having somebody in that position. So if you guys know anybody, that'd be great, otherwise, that's all the community advisory committee has at this point.
Dan, do you send out a notice for your advisory council? I'm just hoping I'm not missing any meetings or anything. I don't think I'm on that committee, but do you send out the notices?
Uh, yeah, no, you're not on it, and it's, this is not meant to single anybody out, it's, it's, it's a result of training that I had. Um, and, you know, we're just kind of taking a look at things, a little, trying to drill down a little bit more. And, and seeing if it can be more of a back and forth versus a me, it's very similar to me giving this report, right? And, and, um, as a result, I think we've had people to kind of trail off and, and, um. You, you know, maybe because of the repetitiveness of it, I mean, you know, like I say, it's for my own professional growth as well and, and. Just hoping to better utilize a group full of talented people and skillful people that, okay, here's my talent, here's my skill. Similar to what I was kind of mentioning with the grant, I mean, if I can bring in those diverse voices and different, different. Um, you know, talents and skills and have them, uh, offer the, offer their some advice, support and those kind of things. So no, Rox, you're not on it, uh, uh, I will say that I was directing the adults with disabilities comments towards you just a little bit. So, um, no, that's it, Rox, so no, and, and like I say, it's not meant to single anybody out, I know we're all busy and. And, and it's part, part of it's my fault, I mean, there was a month, I think, where I, I missed, towards the end of the month, I had to be gone and. In fact, I might have been at one of these, uh, deals here actually with, there, there were two Wednesdays in a row where I was. Out of the district and that's where some of this is coming from, and I learned a lot, so. I, I'd love to bring the things that I've learned that other people are doing back to us and see if we can, we can grow, um, you know, just continue to grow.
Thank you very much, Dan. Yep.
I forgot one thing in my, uh, report from the high school, I did wanna mention, and, and when Dan mentioned, uh, Beth, Slotinsky. Uh, Beth had mentioned that she and some other staff members and some students had gone around and picked up, um, garbage and things around, uh, trash. Between here and Falls Elementary, and one of the things they noticed that there were, um, a couple places where there were. Larger numbers of cigarette butts, so one of the students had asked about getting some signage. And Beth is working on that now, she's gonna work with Tom Holt and use some of her money to get some, some signage up. Just to remind people that it's a no smoking area, and it was kind of in parking lot areas and people were just probably unaware of that. So I told Beth I would mention that because that was nice that they had done that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Recreation Commission, uh, does somebody from, that serves on the Recreation Commission, would like to give an update?
Bruce, can you grab a microphone? None of us at home can hear you.
One sec.
Yeah, sorry about that, um, I was, I was just saying that they just mentioned the city beach opening up the week of June seventh. Or that's when the lifeguards will be on duty, Little League Baseball starting up the week of, uh, May seventeenth. And then the, uh, then Bill Mason, the athletic director, touch base on, uh, a few other items, uh, that, that he's involved with. And, and that's about it, nothing, nothing else at this point.
Thank you, Bruce. What's that, Tony? What's that, Tony?
Trying to get some more certified lifeguards, so if anybody knows any lifeguards, or anybody interested, send them, send them their way.
Is that for people at the beach then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it'd be both. Yeah, both of us, we kind of, we kind of coordinate and tag team together, we've, we've had one new lifeguard, and we've probably had about five or six who've left since I've been here. You know, they, because of COVID, we weren't offering any hours, they got different jobs, they saw how much more money they could make when they can work an eight-hour day versus a one or two-hour day, so.
Yeah, but it's not at the beach.
Yeah, well, I know, but in some cases, it's at like resorts and other things.
Yeah, that's true, a lot of the times it is, they're working on the wake and stuff.
Yeah, so we're, we're hurting, that's another, that's another place where if anybody knows any kids, and we, we're hoping to have one more class, but, but the, the person who is our lifeguard certified instructor, he's retired, and his wife reminded him that he's retired, so it's been tough to get him to commit to, he's, you know, he's working two other jobs that he used to work at, and, and then trying to get him to also instruct our, our kids, and he gives a lot of his time and, and does it out of the goodness of his heart mostly, but, yeah, we, so we're hoping to have another class, we do have, I think about three or four local people who would, who would be interested in taking it, and then two from Lake of the Woods who would come and do it, so the numbers justify him being able to do it, it's just, you know, he's, he's retired and wants to enjoy these summer months and would rather do it in the fall slash winter, so.
Okay. Any, but any other board members have anything else before we adjourn?
Just asking once again, how's the geese doing? All right, good. They know we're coming and they.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Got a motion by Rocks, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Bruce. Any further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote to adjourn, I don't even know what time it is, 6:4, 6:15. Tony Corpey?
Yes.
Emily McGonigal?
Yes.
Bruce Ralboine?
Yes.
Ted Saxton, yes, Roxanne Skokstadich?
Yes.
Joanne Smith?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
We are adjourned.